Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation given by Chapel Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, I pray that you'll guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make decisions that are important for this county and seek to strike that balance between private property rights and fostering outstanding communities and neighborhoods throughout our county. As always, Lord, I pray for the members of our armed forces and our first responders. I pray that you'll guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for all these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner White. Mr. Moreta, change to the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Moreta, Development Services Department. Commissioners, we do have one change to the agenda as found on Agenda Page 13, Item F1, Application Number 20-0064. This application has been continued by staff for the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Now moving to the agenda, going to the withdrawals, continuances, and remands. Item A1, DRI 19-1042. This application is being continued by staff for the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A2, this application's out of order. It's being continued, the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A3, Personal Appearance 20-0303. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A4, this application's been continued by staff to the May 12th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A5, this application's out of order. It's being continued, the June 9th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A6, this application's being continued by staff to the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A7, this application's being continued by staff for the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A8, this application's being continued, the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. As a matter of right, item A9, this application's out of order. It's being continued, the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A10, petitioner's requesting a continuance to the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A11, this application's being continued by staff for the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A12, this application's being continued by staff for the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. And then the final one is Item A13, DRI 19-0841. This application's being continued by staff to the April 7th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
If you have any B items on the consent agenda, your items have been approved. Any B items on the consent agenda, your items have been approved. Anyone who intends to present testimony, evidence, or otherwise be heard on any matter scheduled for consideration at today's meeting, please stand and raise your right hand so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please be seated.
Mr. Moreta.
Commissioners, nothing's been removed from consent, so that would bring us back to the consent agenda itself? Has that been approved?
Approve that over.
Okay, that's been approved. I'm sorry. That would bring us to C1, which would be the public hearings. Item C1 will be presented by the Real Estate Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Elise Alvarez, Geospatial Land and Acquisition Services. Item C1 is Vacate V20-0001. This petition is brought by John and Christie Trevathan Rene Marcia John Michael Jelusis to vacate a portion of a platted 30-foot-wide unimproved right-of-way lying between tracks one and four within the plat of Keystone Park Colony as recorded in Plat Book 5, Page 55 of Hillsborough County records. This request is made for future home addition. The proposed vacate area is located north Tarpon Spring Road, west Burl Road, and Odessa. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there were no objections to the vacating of this right-of-way. However, TECO is requesting a reservation of a utility easement over the north 25 feet of the proposed vacate area due to facilities maintained and located in that area. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item C1? Anyone wishing to address Item C1? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item C1. I can't vote. My computer just shut down. Hold on just a second. Let me turn it off. I think we have a motion and a second seeing no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Moreta.
Item C2 is an additional vacating petition that will be presented by Real Estate Department.
C2 today is Vacate V20-0005. This is a petition by Transcend Development Corporation to vacate and release perpetual easement abutting parcels 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 9 within the Adams Van Camp Minor Division, subdivision, recorded in Survey Book 1, Page 5 of the public records of Hillsborough County. This request is made in order to replat for future development. The petition was routed to the appropriate departments and agencies, and there were no objections to the vacating of this easement. In addition to the adoption of the resolution, a release and termination of perpetual easement for execution by the board is requested for title clearing purposes. The subject area is located north of Boyette Road and west of Baum River Road in Riverview. The staff is recommending approval of this petition request.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item C2? Anyone wishing to address Item C2? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item C2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Moreta.
Item C3 is a vacating petition that will be presented by the Real Estate Department.
C3 is Vacate 20-0008, and this petition is being brought by Joseph and Amy Kowalski and Tibbetts Land LLC to vacate a certain utility easement which was reserved over that portion of previously vacated right-of-ways lying in Block U, plat of Riverview Heights, recorded in Plat Book 9, Page 37 of the public records of Hillsborough County. This request is made in order to utilize the area for future development. The proposed vacate area is located north of Riverview Drive and east of US Highway 301 in Riverview. The petition was routed to the appropriate departments and agencies, and there were no objections to this easement. Staff is recommending approval of this request.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item C3? Anyone wishing to address Item C3? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item C3. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to E1. This is a public hearing. Personal Appearance 19-1512. The parcel's located 90 feet north of the intersection of West Hillsborough and Montague Avenue. It involves approximately four areas of revision on the site plan. A couple of them is, two of them is to add cross-access, also to move existing access points and to add two additional access points. And Brian Grady's going to walk through the different areas where the access is being modified.
Good morning. Good morning, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. The area of the modification is at the northwest corner of Hillsborough Avenue and Montague. The proposed changes they're asking for is they're adding a cross-access connection in the area noted with 1. They're relocating an existing access point from that area further north for right-in, right-out only. They're adding a full access point, doing a 3 along this area, and then a right-in, right-out access point on Hillsborough Avenue in the area identified as 4. Happy to answer any questions?
Applicant.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Wright, TSB Companies. Our address is PO Box 1016, Tampa, Florida, 33601. Brian.
Yes, 15 minutes. 15, 15. Okay.
Brian, already adequate. We've covered everything I was going to go over. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents wishing to speak on Item E1? Any proponents, any opponents, wish to speak on Item E1? You waive your vote of time, I guess. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, to approve Item E1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Moreta.
This brings us up to Item E2. This is a public hearing. Personal Appearance 20-0196, located 130 feet southwest of the intersection of South Falkenburg Road and Progress Boulevard. Commissioners, this is a modification to PD's site plan dealing with access. The parcel's located on the southwest corner of Progress Boulevard and Falkenburg Road. Israel Monsanto is going to walk through the access changes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Israel Monsanto Development Services. On your screen, on the left, you have the current plan development, approved plan for parcel A, which is a subject site. Currently, there is a shared access facility, which is, it would be developed between the two parcels, and is also providing cross-access. With this PRS, the applicant is proposing to shift the shared access facility to the north to be only on parcel A, but still providing cross-access to the parcel to the south. That's basically the changes being proposed.
Applicant here. Morning, you have 15 minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Michael Horner, 14502, Northdale, Mabey Highway, Tampa, 33618. Bottom line, the south property owner decided to waive and abandon their access that would be shared with ours. They have a wetland and a stormwater management system, so we have to move this access further north onto my client's property. We will still offer a connection, even though it's going to connect to a wetland. Staff supports. We appreciate your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address Item E2 as a proponent? Anyone as a proponent? Anyone wishing to address Item E2 as an opponent? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item E2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to a public hearing. This is E3 on the agenda. Personal Appearance 20-0341, located at 13396 East US Highway 92. This is an amendment to a plan development. Plan development has a maximum building height applicable to Pocket B, which is 25 feet. The applicant is proposing to move that to 36 feet for two specific areas of the site plan. One of them is for a fire water tower, and the other is for a vehicle service center. That height, the additional height is sought for both of those structures. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. I should add that those structures are located internal to the site, and we are recommending approval.
Applicant. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, Commissioner's staff. Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South in St. Petersburg, Florida, number 451. This request, as Joe mentioned, is interior to the site. We're 200-plus feet from the property lines. The FAR is many times below what's allowed by code. This is for General RV, an outstanding operator throughout the state. This is their premier site, and they're thrilled to be a part of Hillsborough County. We have support from the staff. I received a couple of calls just questioning or just asking what the request is for, but no opposition. And again, your staff is in support. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Any proponents? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve Item E3. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Moreta.
Commissioners, this is Item E4, a public hearing. Personal Appearance 20-0387. This is located 40 feet southeast of the intersection of 12th Street Southeast and 14th Avenue Southeast. Commissioners, this is approximately 49-acre parcel, and it's a plan development. There's a modification proposed to the plan development, site planning conditions, to modify the lot orientation along 12th Street to reduce the landscaping buffer from 20 to 10 feet along 14th Avenue, add access and modify design of pedestrian access, and also modify the internal site design for the roadway. Mr. Israel Monsanto of our staff is going to walk through the site plan and orient the board to the changes.
Good morning, Israel Monsanto Development Services. Commissioners, to your left, you have the currently approved PD plan, which has these three access points here, and then a cross-access to the north. The applicant is proposing the same access connection, but is also adding a cross-access to the east on this location. These lots in the current plan are fronting 12th Street. The applicant is proposing to have those switched internally to fronting internal roadways. There is a 20-foot buffer currently approved on the north side of 14th Avenue. The applicant is proposing to reduce the buffer. There is also a gated pedestrian connection approved today. The applicant is maintaining the pedestrian connection, but it's not, it will not be gated. The applicant is removing the gate. Additionally, you can see the internal roadway network is being changed slightly. It has a different layout, and this cul-de-sac is being eliminated. And again, the access to the east is being proposed. Am I able to have any questions?
Okay, see no questions. Applicant. Good morning.
Good morning. Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100. Israel did a very nice job, and I just wanted to let you know that we have worked with staff on a condition in lieu of the second sentence of 5.1, which says no fencing. Because of the way that we are orienting the lots, people's backyards will be exposed to streets. And so, in lieu of the second sentence of condition 5.1, we propose the following. Along 12th Street Southeast, 14th Avenue Southeast, and 15th Street Southeast, a green space buffer of 10 feet in width shall be provided. The green space buffer shall be developed with street trees staggered 20 feet on center, and fences may be provided on the interior side of the buffer. The buffer shall be platted as a separate parcel and owned and maintained by an HOA or similar entity. Yes, ma'am.
That's it? You're done?
That said, we're available for any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this as a proponent? Anyone as a proponent? Anyone wishing to address this as an opponent? Any opponents? You waive your time.
Yes.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Actually, I just want to ask you a quick question, just to clarify what I think I just heard.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you are prohibiting any fences at the buffer line, but you're permitting fences on the 12th Street, on the actual property owner's property?
Yes. So, as you know, the Ruskin Community Plan says no walls or segregating features. But because of the orientation of many of these lots, their backyard will be up to the street. And so, to allow there to be fencing for children playing and pets and things in the backyard, we're proposing that fences are permitted along these streets, but that the fences will be on the interior of this buffer. And then it prescribes the conditions of the buffer.
And the height restriction for those fences?
Whatever is currently permitted by code, which I believe is 6 feet.
I'm sorry?
Whatever is currently permitted by code, which I believe is 6 feet. We're not asking for any waivers of the height of the fence.
Okay. Because I liked the project until you turned it around. Because then it really does, and if you still permit fencing, you separate from the rest of the community in the area.
Well, let me just also comment. If you look at some of the changes, and we didn't go over those in detail because Israel Monsanto did, but we have actually added connectivity to the east. We have taken a pedestrian pathway that was gated, and we've removed the gate to incorporate additional connectivity. So, the intent isn't really to segregate the community. It's to open it up with those particular features, but it's also to allow private property owners to be able to have a fence in their yard because of the way that those lots are oriented.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
So, the only fencing that will be allowed is the each individual homeowner to provide their own, or does this?
No. The concern was, and we worked with staff in this condition, the concern was that some homeowners might put up a fence and some not along certain streets. And then you have this very odd, open, closed, open, closed. So, for consistency and to provide an aesthetically pleasing sort of row, that was the reason that the fences go on the inside of the buffering along these particular streets, and that would be their backyard. And then the buffering would be to the outside of the street. So, as you're riding down the street, you don't just have a fence. You have some nice buffering and trees and sod and ground cover.
That's not how I understood it, because the Ruskin Community Plan says no walls or gates for a few reasons. We want, and as you know, I was deeply involved in the writing of this. So, first of all, connectivity. We want, we don't want to have to drive around big subdivisions. Want to be able to drive through, and this does provide that. But also, to prevent that, so that our community doesn't turn into a maze of walled canyons where you're not like, you don't have the open neighborhood community feeling like you do where most of you live, you know? So that it's not segregated visually by these walled canyons. I understand that in this instance, the, because the development across 12th Street already had their, has their backyards facing the street, it makes sense to allow this side of the street to do the same thing. But I would prefer to have it just left, to remove the restriction for individual homeowners, but not to allow one steady gate to be put up, I mean, one steady wall that could end up being a six-foot wall after all, but just 10 feet in. And frankly, the Ruskin Community Plan, when we were writing it, we, like a lot of communities, were hoping to have a mix of home types instead of just the cookie cutter beige boxes that you get in when you do a whole lot at one time. And so, you know, letting each homeowner have a fenced backyard if they've got a dog or a child, but maybe the next one doesn't. One's a picket fence, one's a chain link fence, one's wooden, whatever, would add to that diversity and still allow the private property rights without saying, come on, we're just going to do it 10 feet in and have a wall.
I guess part of the concern, and what we were working with staff on, is to the maintenance of those areas. To the extent that you have it maintained, this strip by a homeowners association or similar entity, you can be sure that these trees and these landscaping are being maintained in a fashion that keeps them viable and beautiful for the community, rather than relying on individual homeowners to, a, plant it appropriately and maintain it appropriately.
Thank you. We really are not looking for uniformity as much as allowing individuality. And I'd like to ask Ms. Leinhart if she has any comments to this from the perspective of the comprehensive plan, which the Ruskin Community Plan is part of.
Sure. Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. We did review this PRS at the request of Development Services for comprehensive plan consistency. And as you mentioned, this item is specifically mentioned in the Ruskin Community Plan. The language reads exactly, "Encourage development that is connected with and integrated into the Ruskin community. Design features, e.g., walls, gates, that isolate or segregate development from the community is inconsistent with the community's character and should be discouraged." We made a comment in an email to Israel Monsanto of Development Services that while the Ruskin Community Plan does not address fences on individually platted lots, it does address isolating subdivisions from the surrounding community as part of Goal 5, which I just read. And then we further stated that a condition eliminating a fence along 12th Street would further PRS's 20-0387's consistency with the Ruskin Community Plan. But from our perspective, that fence was an individual fence on individual properties, not a fence surrounding an entire development created by the builder from the get-go that wasn't shown on the site plan. So, we would concur with you that we would like to leave it up to the individual lot owner. So therein, it does not segregate on one holistic level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, I'm going to go back, because I actually drafted the condition, and staff had concerns about individuals, so I changed the condition. So, I'm going to go read into the record and submit this for your consideration, what I had originally drafted to address this. If fences are constructed, if fences are constructed along the perimeter, a green space of each, we can put in there, of each lot, a green space buffer of 10 feet in width shall be provided on the exterior of the fence. The green space buffer shall be developed with street trees staggered 20 feet on center. The remainder of the buffer shall be planted with shrubs, ground cover, or sod. That means each individual, this was written so that each individual homeowner could put those fences up for their children in safety. I was, with the revised condition, I was really trying to address the conditions of staff, but I understand that that isn't what the board would like. So, I'd replace what I originally submitted with this new condition for your consideration if you choose to consider that condition.
Commissioners, just for clarification on that, so the way that condition is presented here would work is there would be variable buffers. Some lots would have them, some lots would not, but you're not going to have a platted buffer with plantings as you typically see. You're proposing a buffer with trees on 20-foot centers on a lot-by-lot basis. Is that correct?
I understand.
Is that the intent of that?
The intent of that original condition was to provide a buffer outside the fence on an individual lot basis. To the extent that individual homeowners wanted to put up a fence, they would have to comply with this condition. I think that's what I'm hearing from Commissioner Smith, is that that's what she'd like to see. We worked with staff to make it more uniform so that we could ensure maintenance, but that seems to not be the pleasure of the board.
So, that condition is implementable. Just want to clarify that that is not the way that buffers would typically be provided. It would be on an individual homeowner, by homeowner basis, that when they're putting up a fence, they're then required to put and maintain the landscape buffer. If that's, if that's the board, what the board, if the board would so like that, that can be implemented. It's a little different than how it would typically be implemented, because fences in of themselves don't require permits, so homeowner can just go up and put up a fence. So, would be something that the developer would have to put homeowners on notice of, or we would have to, you know, identify situations where it was done inconsistent with the zoning and take it up with the individual homeowner.
Thank you. It's not as important to me that, you know, somebody does this differently. It's, but I think consistent with the Ruskin Community Plan and what we're looking for there, this would be the best way to get at letting individual homeowners put a fence without having some standardized look along the street.
Commissioner Smith, do you want to leave it to the homeowner for what that buffer looks like? Or I guess the question would be, under your Or I, I guess the question would be, um, under your scenario, if individual property owners are responsible for putting up the fence, would you prefer not to have that buffer requirement, or have the buffer requirement without specifications, that they could plant whatever they wanted to in there?
I don't see why not.
If, if, if there's, if there's no specification of what gets planted in the buffer, um, we really won't have anything to regulate for that. So if, if the board is, is, um, amenable to potentially fences being 10 feet from the lot line and having, um, sod down, um, you know, the ground, we will require the ground to be stabilized. Uh, as to, as to individual landscaping, if there's something prescribed in the conditions, and we would, we would regulate to that, and if it was left up to the individual homeowner, then we really, it's not really something that we'd have clarity on, being able to regulate, the saying they're in compliance or, or not in compliance.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that gets us, uh, more of the individuals. Are you hearing anything, Ms. Leinhardt, that could run into trouble with this?
Um, thank you. Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission Staff. I do not see an issue either way, to be honest. I, I see Adam's point with not being able to regulate what goes inside of that buffer, so some could be empty, and some could have, you know, could be planted full of trees. So they would not look uniform, I think, by nature unless that was coordinated effort. Um, so I do see the, um, the inability to enforce what goes in the buffer if you don't specify what goes in the buffer, but from a community plan perspective, I don't think it matters to us either way.
And, and I think the, actually having been in the Ruskin Community Plan, and we had a lot of discussions about, you know, letting everybody, uh, do what they want on their property, so we have a, a variety. If someone wants a rose garden, if someone wants a vegetable garden, if somebody wants just, uh, sod, that's, um, fine with it from the community plan standpoint. So I think we're good.
So Adam, should I read what I think the condition is, or would you like to?
No, I think it'd be helpful if you'd like to read what you're proposing.
So I think, um, really all we have to do now is eliminate the second sentence of Condition 5.2, which prohibits fencing. Is that correct, Israel? I'm sorry, 5.1.
Uh, if, if you wanted to have it so that it was 10 feet in on the lot, I believe you'd have to specify that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You gonna say something else?
Well, I was just gonna-
Go ahead.
-specify. If, if fences are constructed on the perimeter of each property, a green space buffer of 10 feet in width shall be provided. That sentence would be in lieu of the second sentence of Condition 5.1, which prohibits fencing.
Sounds good. I'll move the item.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item E4. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I think part of the issue is the height, because if you've got a six-foot fence, it feels like a wall. Um, is there, are there any provisions anywhere in our code that suggest a, a shorter-than-six-foot height? Because if you had a, you know, a four-foot height or a five-foot height, you'd still keep a child inside, or an animal inside, you know, dogs and cats and those kinds of things. Well, maybe not cats, but dogs and children, you know, inside someone's yard, but you don't have a wall. And so if, if what was originally proposed, not that I'm gonna go back to what you originally suggested, were a shorter fence that was, you know, less barrier-wise, like not a big huge plywood fence, you know, or a board fence, but some kind of attractive fence that actually was lower in height, that did, didn't eliminate that visuals, you know, barrier, um, that, that's kinda where I was kinda going. So if we're gonna have to have a separation from the community across the street, like make it less walled off, which was what I thought I understood the community plan to imply. Um, but if, you know, if the, if it were a lower height and more transparent or, or less of a barrier, would that get us where we're, what, what, what the developer, the community want, was trying to accomplish? I, I mean, I don't wanna go back on what was just agreed to, but I, I just thought we might be able to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with a lower, more ornamental type of fence that still provided a safety barrier for animals and children. I don't know what the rules are as far as fences are concerned.
And required front yards, fences are limited to four feet in height. They're allowed to go up to six feet in side yards and rear yards, and also front yards that function as rear yards. So if you have a three lot on both streets, each side of that would be considered a front yard, however, in that front yard that functions as a rear, so that the house isn't oriented that, allows six feet, otherwise it is a four-foot limit for, for front yards.
That's what I was thinking. This is more like a front yard because it's facing the street, even though the houses have now been turned around. So that's why I was asking.
So, just to clarify, it sounds like that provision would, would segregate at a lower level, but what you were saying, Commissioner Smith, is that in the community plan, your intent at least, was that each homeowner could do what they wanted? Um, I think that would be our inclination, uh, from the applicant, based on the overall discussion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. White, you recognize?
So are you still proposing that an HOA or some similar entity control that 10-foot buffer in this scenario?
No, sir. No, if it wasn't a consistent buffer along a long swath of roadway, we would leave that to the private homeowners, um, which it sounds like, um, it would be more consistent with the community plan to allow each homeowner to do what they want on their property in that area. But if the buffer is provided, it does provide areas so that the fences aren't right up against the street.
Right. I, I'll just, I'll just say for the record that, um, I, I think, um, as far as aesthetics of the community are concerned, I like the original proposal better. Um, but, um, in deference to Commissioner Smith, that was so involved in, in the drafting of this Ruskin Community Plan, you know, I'm gonna support the motion on the floor with, uh, with the revised condition.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Um, thank you. This'll be brief. Commissioner White, I agree with you. I think the original, um, uh, plan proposed, um, is best for the aesthetics and for property values. For the years I've sat on this board, I can't tell you how many complaints we've had about fences and disparities between one yard and the next, and I think this will be breeding ground for, um, people to complain. Somebody that has a very nice fence and somebody puts up a, um, not a barbed wire, but a steel type, I mean, it's just, this is common sense. Um, I think maybe this is something that needs to be looked at in the community plan to allow for flexibility, because I think that this is something that, um, definitely for aesthetics, like Commissioner White said, but, um, in, since we have the community plan the way it is today, and it is worded that way, I mean, I am gonna vote to approve it, because I don't wanna see this, um, not be approved, but I think, um, this is opening up kind of a hornet's nest for the future if we continue, uh, to do these and not look at the aesthetics or the privacy issues, um, and also neighbor issues, uh, that can come up in relation to this.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you, I'll be fast too. Um, but I really appreciate, it's, it's great to have someone here who was involved in the community plan so deeply and to know that there were those actual discussions and considerations that took place. I think it would be, um, uh, you know, contrary to the community plan to, uh, have what is basically an internal wall, which would have been an external wall, otherwise it, um, that strikes me as being true. I also can appreciate diversity, um, but I do think there are times when, I mean, I live in a neighborhood where people can plant whatever they want, there's no HOA or anything like that, um, and put up whatever fence they want. But, um, I can see where sometimes there are, uh, issues with, with neighbors, but I, you know, I, I'm not sure how you, uh, deal with those kinds of, um, individual decisions. So, uh, you know, I'm just glad to have you here, I'll support this now, but, you know, if there's more discussion to be had about a way to, uh, maybe look at something, something else, I think that's something that could be done in the future.
And Commissioners, if I just clarify on the question, this 10-foot buffer will be part of the homeowner's lot. So the 10 feet on the outside of the fence will be the maintenance responsibility of each individual homeowner, so to keep it mowed and trimmed and so forth. Just wanted to make sure that, that part is clear on the record. It's not a buffer like you typically have.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to U5. It's a public hearing, personal appearance 20 dash 0393. This is for a modification of a planned development in parcel one of Summerfield Crossings. It's located on the northeast corner of 301 and, and Summerfield Drive. Uh, the petitioner is seeking a, a right-in, right-out access point to Summerfield Drive. Our transportation staff has reviewed it and recommended approval. Brian Grady, Grady's gonna orient you in terms of the location of the, of the proposed access.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Uh, the subject-
Is your mic on?
Good morning, Commissioner, can you? Now, can you hear me? Again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Uh, the parcel, that's the subject of the modification, is identified in red within the Summerfield, uh, planned development. Uh, again, what they're proposing is at this, on the south side of the property, along Summerfield Crossings Boulevard, to add a right-in, right-out only onto, uh, Summerfield Crossings Boulevard. The parcel will also take access off of the internal access drive that's on the eastern side of the property. Do you have to answer any questions?
Applicant? Good morning, you have 15 minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, my name is David Mechanic, 305 South Boulevard, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, LG301 LLC. The staff, I think, did a, um, perfectly good job of describing what we are proposing. It is a single-access driveway. I would just point out that even though Summerfield Crossings will be dedicated to the public, it is, uh, internal to the development, the Summerfield development. We concur with the condition, uh, proposed by staff, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent on E5? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent on E5? Any opponents wishing to speak on item E5? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item E5. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to items E6 and E7. Brian Grady of our staff will make the presentations. These are two, is, Community Development District items.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Department, uh, item E5, CDD 20 dash 0279 is a petition to expand the Sherwood Manor Community Development District. The petition has been submitted by Sherwood Manor CDD to expand the CDD by adding approximately 14.11 acres of the CD, CDD. The revised CDD would accomplish, uh, approximately 179.72 acres and is located east of 6th Street Southeast between 16th Avenue Southeast on the north and 21st Avenue Southeast on the south side in Ruskin. No objections to the pro-CDD raised by reviewing agencies. Uh, staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida statutes to expand the Community Development District and recommends approval of the availability for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent on item E6? Any proponents on item E6? Any opponents on item E6? Any opponents? See none? Public hearing is closed. Motion by Commissioner Murman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item E6. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Next item is item E7, CDD 20 dash 0355, petition to establish the Berry Bay Community Development District. The petition has been submitted by 301 Wyoma LLC to establish the Berry Bay CDD. The Berry Bay CDD will accomplish approximately 361.82 acres and is located between US 301 and State Road 579 and south of Bonita Drive and north of Saffold Road in Wyoma. No objections to the pro-CDD raised by reviewing agencies. Staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida statutes to establish a Community Development District and recommends their approval. Available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to stress item E7 as a proponent? Any proponents? Any opponents on item E7? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve item E7. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to the portion of the agenda where we have petitions with oral argument filed, but we have distinctions in detail in terms of the, um, various recommendations. F1 was continued, that brings us to F2. This is a rezoning, a proposal for a planned development, 20 dash 0069. The background on this case is that it was rezoned to RSC9 with a restriction. Uh, that restriction limited the lot sizes to 7,200 square feet. That particular zoning is being sought to be rezoned to planned development. The purpose of the planned development is not to achieve additional entitlements, nor is it intended to reduce that lot size. The purpose of it is to reduce the setbacks to accommodate front porches and side-loaded garages. Um, as part of that planned development, more detail on the plan was required. Staff is recommending approval of the, of this zoning, um, with conditions and the site plan as well, but as part of that site plan process, when the applicant applied for PD, uh, the detail was necessary to show the connectivity to various lot lines. Um, as part of the review, uh, a distinction in detail came out between our recommendation, which is approval subject to conditions, including the site plan, and the zoning hearing master's recommendation. There is a, uh, a question about a connection to the west of the site. Previously, there was a zoning condition that required screening along that property line, and there is now a question about the screening that will be provided in the area where the roadway connection is proposed. In our recommendation, we are recommending that the access be provided by, um, in, in a typical standard, which would require the pavement to go to the property line, because the pavement is going to the property line to accommodate future cross-access, there will not be any screening across the right-of-way. Um, it is a private right-of-way, but nonetheless, we treat it as right-of-way, and in right-of-way, we don't allow the construction of fences or screening or buffering. Um, in the zoning hearing master's recommendation, the zoning hearing master deferred it to working with Transportation Department to accommodate a screening and buffering scenario. So that's a distinction between our recommendations. Johanna may get more into detail on the zoning hearing recommendation itself. The applicant, or excuse me, the application has all approvals in consistency with the plan, however, there's a distinction in detail. No oral argument has been filed, but that's why it's on this portion of the agenda. We're available for questions if you have any-
Snuggly, you wanna address the zoning hearing master's recommendation?
Um, yes, um, Commissioners, I'll summarize the distinction between the ZHM recommendation and what Development Services has recommended. Uh, the ZHM did look at the overall project and found it to be, uh, consistent with the plan and code. Uh, the ZHM did note that the proposed PD site plan addresses connectivity through roadway stubout to the east and west, and the ZHM noted that neighbors adjacent and to the west of the project expressed concern for the, uh, break in the proposed 10-foot buffer and screening along the west boundary in order to accommodate the 50-foot width right-of-way stubout, including its associated pavement. The zoning hearing master recommended that this concern be addressed through a modified recommended condition of approval that would provide for an allowance to hold the roadway pavement short of the west property line and allow for the buffer and screen to be continuous in the north-south direction along the west property line until such time as the cross-connection, paved, uh, connection is extended across that property line. Um, again, notwithstanding that, um, distinction, the zoning hearing master recommended approval and, um, provided a recommendation for a change to Condition 3 to accommodate the condition, the continuation, excuse me, of the buffer and screen along the west boundary through the, um, right-of-way roadway stubout that's, um, planned for eventual connection. And I believe staff, um, has, um, a condition that's slightly, um, specific.
Commissioners, we can discuss that-
Commissioners, we can discuss that condition. The way the hearing master wrote this was a little bit, put us in a little bit of an unusual position. We've made a recommendation, and the hearing master has made a recommendation that we relook at the condition. We do have some suggestions that try to bridge what we've recommended, what we're trying to accomplish with that, and the hearing master's recommendation. So the condition currently has the road stubbed out and constructed to the property line. If there is vegetation to be planted in there, the two can't coexist. However, if a fence were to be installed at the edge of that right-of-way line, that could be installed over the paved stubout. The alternative would be to not pave the stubout to the property line. What we found in the past is that poses some challenge if there is going to be some future connection, if there's a gap in pavement. So that's kind of our struggle with trying to come up with a recommendation of how to implement the hearing master's recommendation. However, again, a fence across that paved right-of-way could accomplish that. Something short of that would, I think, necessitate not paving all the way up to the property boundary.
So you have a recommendation different from the zoning hearing master's? You're trying to work it out at this particular point in time, all right?
Yes, sir.
So should we be voting on this now? Or are you going to work on it and bring it back? What do you want to do?
Well, the hearing master, it's done for the hearing master. We're trying to discern what the hearing master had in mind with the recommended condition that differed from our recommendation. I think if the board was inclined to go with that recommendation, a fence across that right-of-way to provide the screening could coexist with it being paved. The planning of the landscaping within that road would not. So if we were to recommend something that would bridge what we're trying to accomplish or recommending, and what the hearing master's recommended, be that screening would be provided over that paved right-of-way, but only with a fence for the screen.
Mr. Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I think it's important for everybody in the neighborhood to understand there's a stubout here, so that later on, there's not any, you know, objections when, if, and when a connection can ever be made. You have less problems down the road. And to have the stubout go all the way to the property line, the people on the other side of that property boundary can plant whatever they want if they don't like the look of the stubout there. But I'm hoping that we can stick with the original conditions and do what is standard and what we usually do, and that is put the stubout all the way to the property line and not even, not try to hide it.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Well, I was inclined to move Mr. Gormley's recommended condition. I mean, is that...I'll move Mr. Gormley's recommended, move the item with Mr. Gormley's suggested condition relating to the stubout.
So the condition would be that-
Hold on, wait a minute.
Sorry.
Let's do this thing in order, okay? We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman. Mr. Gormley, would you state your condition, please?
The condition would read, is an amendment to condition number three, "A six-foot-high PVC fence shall be provided across the stubbed-out right-of-way and shall be removed at such time as the right-of-way connection, right-of-way will be connected to the adjacent property."
Commissioner White, is that what you understand? Commissioner Murman, is that what you understand? Commissioner O'Leary, you recognize?
So the road would go directly to that PVC, that fence, correct?
Correct.
It was very obvious that a road is going to be to a fence.
Correct. In fact, if the road is stubbed out to the property line, the fence would be going over that paved stubout on the road.
Out beyond the fence to the property line because there's a setback, correct?
The fence will be...it could be anywhere within that 10 feet.
Yeah, because I was going to actually support the zoning master's recommendation, but this sounds like a reasonable compromise.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to G1 on the regular agenda. It's rezoning PD-20-0101, located 30 feet southwest of the intersection of Joe Ebert Road and Timmons Road. Current zoning of the parcel, which is 36 acres, is RSC 2 AR and RSC 2 with a restriction. The RSC 2 permits a minimum half-acre lot. The AR permits one unit per five acres. The request is for a planned development. This is located in the urban service area. The planned development is seeking to allow 133 lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. Staff is recommending approval of this case, and oral argument has been filed.
We have a motion open for oral argument. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White. Open for oral arguments. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Applicant? Good morning, you have 10 minutes.
Good morning. For the record, I am David Wright, President of TSP Companies, and our address is PO Box 1016, Tampa, Florida, 33601. I'm presenting a request to rezone five parcels totaling approximately 36 acres of land from residential, single-family, conventional, RSC 2 and RSC 2 restricted, and agricultural, rural to planned development. Subject property is located within the urban service area, and Planning Commission and Development Services staff have found the request to be appropriate in full development. The zoning hearing master also recommended approval subject to conditions. There are no wetlands located on the subject property, and the property is not mapped to significant wildlife habitat, and a biological assessment confirmed there are no threatened or endangered species on the subject property. Project design team that participated in the development of this PD application are TSP Companies, myself and Timothy Powell as planners, Level Up Consulting's Trent Stevenson for civil engineering and site planning, Naylor Environmental Solutions, Abby Naylor for biological site assessment, and Razor Transportation Consulting's Mike Razor for transportation analysis. We began working on this PD application in June 2019. We participated in a PD zoning pre-application meeting with the Development Services and Planning Commission staffs in August 2019. And prior to filing PD zoning application, we held a community information meeting in September 2019 utilizing the county's public notice mailing list. This request is to rezone the property to planned development to allow 131 single-family detached units with minimum lot sizes varying from 6,000 square feet to 8,400 square feet with lot dimensions of 50 by 120 and 70 by 120. We're going to use the Elmo for this portion. The PD was designed to take advantage of the following existing and proposed features in order to achieve an acceptable level of compatibility with the surrounding properties. The proposed lot depths throughout the PD are 120 feet. Most of the lots along the PD's eastern boundary are proposed to be located adjacent to the existing stormwater management pond, providing a substantial buffer between the existing ASC 1 residences and the PD. The existing Timmons Road right-of-way, which varies in width from 21 feet to 33 feet and is fenced along Joe Ebert Road, is also located between the proposed PD and the ASC 1 properties to the east, providing a buffer between the proposed PD and the larger lots to the east that are located outside of the urban service area. The PD's stormwater management pond is proposed to be located at the southwest corner of the PD to provide a substantial buffer to the Tulon subdivision to the west and south. There is also an existing 30-foot-wide drainage easement within the Tulon subdivision and along the PD's south and west boundaries that provides additional separation between the proposed PD and the Tulon home sites. The Land Development Code does not require any buffering or screening to be provided. However, the PD is proposing to provide type A screening between the PD and the Tulon development in addition to the existing 6-foot-tall vinyl fencing. Joe Ebert Road is designated as a suburban scenic corridor, requiring a 15-foot minimum landscape buffer along the project's Joe Ebert frontage, and the PD is proposing to increase the buffer width to 25 feet to provide additional buffering and screening to the ASC 1 zone properties on the north side of Joe Ebert Road. Additionally, the proposed homes adjacent to the Joe Ebert Road will be placed so that the side yards face Joe Ebert Road, except for the residential tracks A and B that will be retained by the owners of the adjacent properties with folios 61507-2100 and 61507-2200. And this will preserve the existing character along Joe Ebert Road. The landscape and hardscape along Joe Ebert Road will be designed with rural character, including a fence design consistent with rural areas of the county such as Keystone, Odessa, and Lutes. And the proposed homes adjacent to the existing AS 1 zone properties on the west side of the PD will be restricted to single-story. The PD is proposing 6,000-square-foot minimum lot sizes, but will also include 8,400-square-foot lots adjacent to the ASC 1 zone properties located to the east of the PD. The applicant is not requesting any planned development variations for site design. Comprehensive Plan Policy 1.4 defines compatibility as "the characteristics of different uses or activities or design which allow them to be located near or adjacent to each other in harmony." Compatibility does not mean the same as whether at first to the sensitivity of a development proposal and maintaining the character of existing development. As previously stated, the proposed PD is located within the urban service area and proposed to connect to public water and sewer systems. Subject property is located in unincorporated Hillsborough County, and if approved, the developer will be required to pay parks and school impact fees and transportation mobility fees. And the school impact fees will be at the new rates that the board approved last week. Hillsborough County public school staff confirm capacity would currently exist at McDonald Elementary, Jennings Middle School, and Armwood High Schools, taking into account the students that would be generated by the proposed development. Environmental Protection Commission staff conducted an inspection of the site and confirmed that no wetlands or other surface waters exist within the subject property, and EPC staff does not object to the planned development. Planning Commission staff's review concluded in a finding that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Thonona Sassa Community Plan. Specifically, although the applicant is not maximizing the density that could be developed under the RES 4 future land use, the proposed PD does meet the minimum density requirement under Policy 1.2. Buffering and screening above the county's minimum requirements is proposed to be utilized to mitigate any impacts to the surrounding rural residential lots. Comprehensive Plan Policies and the Thonona Sassa Community Plan encourage diversity of lot sizes and mitigation of lots and new development adjacent to lower-density uses. The adopted definition of compatibility indicates it does not mean the same as, rather, it refers to the sensitivity of development proposal and maintaining the character of existing development. The overall area contains mostly residential uses, inclusive of various housing types and densities ranging from manufactured homes to estates, and a planned development rezoning with single-family residential lots is compatible with the existing development pattern. The request would encourage development that complements the surrounding character of the area. At this time, I would like to ask Mike Razor to provide an explanation of the transportation analysis and the administrative variance that was approved by the county engineer.
Hold on just a second, hold on. What's your name, sir?
Michael Razor.
He's not on the list.
Mr. Razor is a part of the applicant's team and prepared the transportation.
He didn't have it on the list. Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, my name is Michael Razor, and I'm a registered professional engineer with a specialization in traffic at 19046 Bruce B. Downs Boulevard, number 308, Tampa, 33647. I was responsible for preparing the traffic study that accompanies this rezoning request and also the administrative variance that speaks of the condition of Joe Ebert Road. In regard to the traffic study, we evaluated traffic operating conditions and found that Joe Ebert Road and the intersections at each end, Williams Road to the west and Mango Road to the east, currently operate at acceptable levels of service and are anticipated to continue to operate at acceptable levels of service upon development of the subject project. Further, the traffic study concluded that development of the subject project is not anticipated to have material impacts upon traffic operating conditions, in that changes to level of service, delay, et cetera, are estimated to be of a magnitude minor enough to not be perceptible to motorists. This is aided by the developer-funded left-turn lane that will be constructed on Joe Ebert Road at the project site driveway, which will not only benefit the project, but will also benefit the other motorists using Joe Ebert Road, as the road will be reconstructed within the area of the turn lane and through the transition areas on each side of it, resulting in new construction for a distance of approximately 1,000 feet. This brings me to the condition of Joe Ebert Road, which was referenced in the staff report as being substandard, where the term "substandard" was reiterated at the ZHM hearing by those in opposition suggesting that the road is in poor physical shape and not capable of handling existing traffic loads, much less new traffic from the subject development. However, putting the term "substandard" into context provides important clarification. Joe Ebert Road is only substandard in comparison to the county's TS 7 typical section for a collector roadway, which reflects 12-foot travel lanes, 5-foot paved shoulders, plus three additional feet of stabilized shoulders, 5-foot sidewalks on both sides, and a minimum right-of-way width of 96 feet. Since Joe Ebert Road does not have these features, we met with the county engineer to discuss its characteristics, which do include 10-to-11-foot lanes, a continuous sidewalk on its south side, and a varying right-of-way width between 50 and 70 feet. From that discussion, an administrative variance was prepared to evaluate and document the features of Joe Ebert Road, including a safety analysis, which concluded that Joe Ebert Road does not have a safety issue. It adequately provides for pedestrian mobility and is otherwise satisfactory, as evidenced by the county engineer's approval of the administrative variance on December 20th of 2019. And of course, I'll be here for questions and follow-up. Thank you.
You have 1 minute and 12 seconds, Mike.
In conclusion, this request has received full compliance with the county's comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Based on the reference submitted documentation, I respectfully request your approval of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have this one person of record to speak in opposition, David Tremble. Good morning, sir. You have 10 minutes.
My name is David Tremble. I live at 9714 Sorbonne Loop Road in the Tulon subdivision. All that was interesting. As far as Joe Ebert Road is, it's a two-lane road. It has cracks all the way through it, has potholes. It's been substandard in terms of the way we talk about it for many years.
Excuse me, Mr. Tremble, I need to remind you at this time that as you present your testimony, you're going to need to remain on the record of what you presented or others presented during the zoning hearing master hearing or any documentation that was placed into the record prior to the zoning hearing master hearing.
That was one of the things they talked about, was the substandard nature of the road. And they, in their testimony, said it was substandard, then later came back and said it's not a substandard road. So I just wanted to clarify in terms of what we consider substandard or standard. It's not a very nice road. It's got lots of potholes, it's got lots of things that need to be corrected. It's a two-lane road, so it's, in terms of that, that's what we thought substandard meant. So I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of what my opposition is at the community development meeting, the petitioner represented that there was not any opposition to it. My understanding, from talking with residents in our community, is there were problems with that. Our problem is, is we're in a planned community, and all the other subdivisions in our area are meeting the zoning that's currently there. And we don't feel that there's a need to increase the density when there's two small, two-lane roads around the property. So from the perspective of the road, that's why I brought that up. In terms of the not having any problems with this development being developed, our community did. We all live in an area that's very rural. All of our properties are larger than the average across the county. This is on the edge of the county, and I realize it's different. Many people moved there because they didn't want to live in many of the subdivisions, like a fish hawk, where there's a lot of traffic and things like that. So from our community's standpoint, we're just asking that they continue to use the same zoning that was originally established. Does that fit within that? I'm sorry.
You can continue. Just please stay on the record. You're doing fine now.
Okay. So in terms of developing that road, that wasn't brought to our attention at the hearing either, as far as making a turn lane. That was a concern of ours. So I don't know where that sits, other than what I just heard at this point. However, if you live in a subdivision and you're used to that subdivision, and we have many people that moved in wanting this zoning, we don't think we need a change in the zoning. We think it can be built the same way, the density, the same as- We think it can be built the same way, the density, the same as all the rest of the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rebuttal? Applicant, you have five minutes.
For the record, Timothy H. Powell, TSB Companies, Post Office Box 1016, Tampa, Florida 33601. Simply reiterate Mike Razor's earlier testimony that the roadway went under extensive review and analysis, and it has been deemed safe. As to the request to simply keep the zoning as it is, that's why we took extreme measures to meet with the citizens. Back in September, we met with planning commission staff and development services staff extensively and achieved approvals across the board. So therefore, we feel that the zoning is appropriate. At this time, I'll turn it over to David.
Mr. Folsom is a property owner, and he spoke at the zoning hearing master, so I'd like to invite him up to make a statement, please.
Um, I'm sorry, he is not, Mr. Folsom is not oral argument speaker. Either it needs to be someone for the applicant team or someone who's on oral argument list.
He's a property owner, part of the application, and he did speak at the ZHM.
Is he the property owner for the subject property?
Yes.
That's authorized you as the applicant?
That's correct.
Okay, then he can proceed. Thank you.
My name is Tom Folsom. I live at 10201 Tom Folsom Road. I've lived there all my life, and I've had seven different addresses. They talk about the area not being rural. It used to be rural. All of the roads out there were dirt. The county started paving, not paving, but grading the roads. And as progress went on, they paved all of the roads. We actually deeded hundreds of feet of Tom Folsom Road to the county. The piece of property that's in question, we still pay taxes to the center of Joe Ebert Road. The biggest reason that all of this was in Orange Groves, both sides of the road, Tom Folsom, including on the other side of Harney Road. All of Joe Ebert had groves all the way down to County Road or Mango, Road 579. As time went on, they put the water through, they put the sidewalk through. The county actually gave us a letter of release of liability on the property, and they went ahead as a civic duty. We signed, and the water and the sidewalks were put in place. So what I would like to show y'all and explain, agriculture is a thing of the past in ThanoTasaka. These are all case numbers from the sheriff department. Various crimes was committed, whether it be stolen or pure vandalism. We have never been any retribution for it. The other thing is, if you go to your insurance company and you turn in three or four claims, you get a letter immediately telling you that you're going to be dropped. So agriculture in that area, everybody says that it is rural. It is not rural, as they said. Tulon is to the west side of the property. South side, Bloomfield is all the way to County Road 579 on the other side. Just this very year, in January and February, we had vandalism thefts on Kingsway inside of Lake ThanoTasaka. We literally had our fences cut.
I'm sorry, sir, even as the applicant and owner of the property, you still need to stick to the record of the zoning hearing master.
Okay.
So please, what you talked about at the zoning hearing master hearing is fine to talk about, but any other facts or incidences can't be brought in at this time.
I was just informing you that the area is not rural as everyone considers it to be, and the issues of trying to do agriculture out there, it certainly isn't the highest and best use of the land to keep it in agriculture. And that's the reason, the problems we're having, that we're asking for the zoning change. Thank you.
The applicant still have one minute and 27 seconds.
That's all we have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission?
Thank you, Melissa Leinhardt. Planning Commission staff, the subject property is located within the residential for future land use category. It is in the urban service area and within the limits of the ThanoTasaka Community Plan. The applicant is requesting a plan development for the purpose of developing a maximum of 133 single-family residential units. The site is within the urban service area and is subject to future land use element minimum density policies. The immediate area is a combination of agricultural and low-density residential future land use designations. With an acreage of 36.04, the site can be considered for up to 144 residential units. Though the applicant is not maximizing the units that can be considered, the applicant is still meeting minimum density requirements per Policy 1.2 of the future land use element. Allowing sites' flexibility to develop at or above the minimum density policy assists the county in reaching a greater utilization of land within the urban service area. The subject property is on the edge of the urban service area, and the proposed application would allow single-family detached residential lots at a minimum of 6,000 square feet. However, to minimize impacts to the lower-density developments to the east, the proposed lot sizes are 8,400 square feet. Additionally, buffering and screening above code requirements are being utilized to mitigate any impacts to the surrounding rural larger residential lots that are external to the site, which is consistent with several policies in the community design component. Comprehensive Plan policies both encourage diversity of lot sizes and mitigation of lots and new developments that are adjacent to lower-density uses. The adopted definition of compatibility indicates it does not mean the same as, rather it refers to the sensitivity of development proposals and maintaining the character of the existing development. The overall area contains mostly single-family residential development, and a planned development rezoning with single-family residential lots is compatible with the existing development pattern. The site is located within the ThanoTasaka Community Plan, and this request is meeting the intent of that plan by maintaining the existing diversity of housing types and styles. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request for rezoning of approximately 36-acre property located approximately on the south side of Joe Ebert Road near Timmins Road. The application requests to rezone the property from RSC2 restricted, RSC2 and AR to a planned development for a maximum of 133 single-family residential units. The property is wholly located within the urban service area, although, excuse me, the rural service area exists immediately north across Joe Ebert Road and immediately adjacent and east on property developed as the Bloomfield Hills subdivision. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed application would allow single-family detached residential lots at a minimum of 6,000 square feet. However, to minimize impacts to the lower density to the east, the proposed lot sizes are approximately 8,400 square feet. Additionally, buffering and screening above code requirements are being utilized to mitigate any impacts to the surrounding rural larger residential lots, which are external to the site, consistent with Policy 12.1.1 of the future land use element. The zoning hearing master considered opposition concerns with regard to Joe Ebert Road, and crash analysis that was provided by the applicant, found that Joe Ebert Road does not have a safety issue associated with roadway characteristics. The zoning hearing master found that regarding compatibility, buffering and screening above code requirements are being utilized to mitigate any impacts to the surrounding rural and larger residential lots external to the site, consistent with Policy 12.1.1. The zoning hearing master found that the applicant is not maximizing the units that can be considered, but the request is still meeting minimum density requirements as per Policy 1.2 of the future land use element. The zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval of the planned development rezoning.
Thank you. Mr. Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will move approval of this item. I want to thank everybody.
Can we get a second? Is there a second? Second.
I want to thank everybody for coming out to speak on this item, especially the property owner. I have full respect for you and the rights of your property. I did ask Adam Gormley, though, order to pass this, that there would be a condition put on to pave the road. If I can ask Adam to present that condition.
Commissioner, thank you. The condition, and I've discussed it with the applicant's representative, would read that "The developer shall repave Joe Ebert Road from the eastern project boundary to the terminus of the westbound left-turn lane transition," which will take a little bit past the western boundary of the project. So it'll be the project frontage plus the transition for the left-turn lane.
Okay, so my motion to approve would include that condition.
Mr. Obol, you recognize?
I was going to ask similar type of condition, because, you know, we're putting a lot more people here. Our plan, comprehensive plan, permits below-average service conditions on transportation requirements, and then we're asking for a waiver. So I was quite challenged by that concept. It may not necessarily have the load of service on it now, but we're adding a lot more homes to it. We're starting to see development in that area. It's right on the edge of the urban service area, and there's no sidewalks. And so, except on one side, if I'm not mistaken. So resurfacing will make the road better, but does, I can't determine whether the waiver, you know, takes away walking along that road safely at night an option. I'm having difficulty finding that language in here.
Commissioner, the condition will require that the road be repaved to the conditions that were described, would be...
Two-lane rural road.
Correct.
That's the challenge here. We're in an urban area, but it's currently a two-lane rural road. So, but we're planning, and we're inside the urban service area, or right on the edge of it, but we're not requiring urban service aerial type of road design.
That's correct. The road, I believe, is currently...
Okay, you understand my question here?
Yes.
And yet, we're asking for a waiver, too. So I'm like, how, please, please come forward, sir. I would appreciate this. My challenge is, we continue to do this and then have communities harm people or have people get harmed in communities that we build, and without necessarily building roads along the way that allow for safe, other than car travel. And I think that's the key here, being is that you're inside the urban service area. I'm trying to just find, what does unreasonable cost mean? Or unreasonable burden? How is that defined?
David Wright, again. There will be sidewalk on the project's side of the road. There's not sufficient right-of-way to put sidewalk on both sides. So that was part of the waiver, is that allowing the sidewalk on one side of the road.
Okay, so the property owner indicated that he had owned the land pretty much down the middle of Joe Ebert Road, so that's a manageable process of adding the sidewalks alongside?
Along the south side of Joe Ebert Road, yes.
South side, okay. Along the property line?
Correct.
Basically, okay. That's what I was wanting to make sure was going to happen. Because, again, we keep allowing level of service D to exist. This is C because we don't have volume, but we're right on the verge of having volume in that area. And cumulatively, if we're still inside the urban service area, we need to make sure we're planning for urban development and design roads and require roads that meet that kind of traffic. So thank you for your answer.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, with conditions of paving the road by the applicant. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, commissioners. This brings us up to the related items, public hearings. First related item is H1A and H1B. This is a personal appearance in South Bend. Proposed modification to the plan development for this site is modifying internal roadways and alignments, development parcel configurations, in addition to school site revising acreages with respect to the various parcels planted for school sites, and also the correction to the DRI to reflect the proposed changes in H1A. H1B is the DRI item 20-0005, and it will have the requisite revisions in the development order if approved by the board in H1A. Mr. Israel Monsanto is going to walk the board through the various changes that are proposed to the site plan.
Good morning, Israel Monsanto Development Services. Commissioners, to your left, you have the current PD plan. This is only the southernmost portion of the PD. You can see how the road alignments are laid at Covington Garden and Waterset Boulevard, Road A, and 30th Street. The proposed changes, as you can see, we have highlighted them in different colors. The red color is the school site. One of the school sites is 25 acres. Because of the road realignment, it's now 15 acres. The blue area is Covington Garden Drive. It's being moved to the east along the I-75. Yellow color is the Waterset Boulevard. This Boulevard is being straightened out, so you can see now it's more straight road. Purple is Road A. Currently, Road A would go from the western boundary all the way to 30th Street. The applicant is proposing to end Road A at Waterset, and then Covington Garden will keep going and then connect to 30th Street Avenue on a northern point. And finally, 30th Street is being slightly reconfigured, and this new layout will be modifying Track 24 on two tracks, Track 24A and Track 24B. All conditions are being amended to reflect all these changes. I have any questions who are available.
Thank you. Do you have a question here? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
I think so. I was having a hard, the South Coast Greenway Trail comes through here, and the developer is required to build that. And I think, I'm just having a hard time finding that and making sure that it is still here and the developer is still required to build it.
So that trail is currently shown on the west side of Waterset and then goes on the west side of 30th Street. You can, maybe you cannot see it in this specific graphic, but it's still there and still being required.
Thank you.
Okay, applicant, you have 15 minutes.
Elise Battle with Sterns Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street. I'm here with template from height design. We're available to answer any questions that you may have today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no party of record on this particular issue? Can we vote on both of these at the same time? Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner, and it is a public hearing.
You have to have party record?
There is a public hearing.
That's not what I asked you. I said, do you have to have parties of record for a public hearing?
Oh, no, sir. This is an open public hearing. It's a PRS, minor modification with a related DRI.
Anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as an opponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as an opponent? Seeing none, what's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, to approve out of H1A and H2, wait a minute, H1A and H1B. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, commissioners. This brings us up to item H2A and H2B on the agenda. H2A is a proposed rezoning to plan development, 19-1445. H2B is a related item agreement for Colonnade Crosstown for a mobility fee buy-down incentive program. Commissioners, the plan development is located on the northwest intersection of Causeway Boulevard in US 301. The proposal is going from several zoning districts essentially to a planned development to allow three different partializations with respective development. Along Causeway, we have Parcels B and C. Those units are proposing for 45,000 square feet of retail and hotel. Parcel C is proposing 425,000 square feet of retail hotels as well. And Parcel A, which is to the north of the site, is proposing approximately 1,400,000 square feet of manufacturing distribution. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and staff is also recommending an additional condition to this item, item H2A, to recognize a vacating that's necessary. And I'll read the condition into the record. It says, "Approval of this plan development shall be effective upon approval of vacating petition V20-0011..." petition V-20-0011 by the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners." That particular vacating will be coming to the board at a future land use meeting. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning item. That particular rezoning would be on consent. However, the applicant has filed oral argument to speak to the board, and then there'll be a subsequent discussion on the buy-down incentive program agreement. Again, staff is recommending approval of the zoning. We're available for questions.
We're gonna vote on these separately.
You may vote on both together. Oral argument has been filed, so you'll need to open for oral argument for the presentation by the applicant.
Okay, all right. Before we open for oral argument, I'm taking the chairman's prerogative. Mr. Marquetti, come to the podium, please. It is so good to see you, my man.
Thank you.
We've been praying for you and hoping that you will return, and the Lord has answered prayer.
Thank you very much. That's why I'm here, because the prayers.
We want to be glad to say that you're here, and we continue to pray for you.
Thank you. Very much.
Have a motion open for oral argument. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White, open for oral arguments. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Applicant?
Thank you for that, Mr. Chairman. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. Commissioners, the only reason we filed oral argument today is to answer any questions you had since there was a related item. Otherwise, we would have been on consent. We're here to keep Coke, Florida, one of the largest independent bottlers in the country, in this county. They're looking at a over $300 million, $300 million investment in the county, and they're looking to create 182 new jobs in the county. This is a great opportunity. This is just the sort of redevelopment I think this board has been looking for. So we're here with any questions. We have representatives of the developer, as well as Coke, Florida, and our entire team. So we ask for your approval, and we would ask for you to vote on these items at the same time. Thank you.
Okay. I have no one in opposition of party of record at this particular point in time. This is in my district. It is bringing jobs in my district. I'm gonna pass the gavel to the vice chair and move that we approve item H2A and H2B.
Just a couple of quick comments regarding H2B. This is an extremely valuable targeted, and I want to emphasize targeted, economic development tool that has greatly assisted our economic development efforts. We've approved several mobility fee buy-down incentives since the board approved the program in 2016. However, with headquarters, manufacturing, and a distribution component, this is by far the biggest project we've considered under this program. And unless I'm mistaken, this is a bigger project than Amazon, unless I'm mistaken. It's an excellent ROI. Property currently generates $33,000 in property tax revenue, but this project will generate over 1.3 million in unincorporated Hillsborough alone per year. Our investment will be repaid in less than four years, which is virtually unheard of in our economic development or incentive tools. So, and lastly, this location in Commissioner Miller's district, but it's identified as one of our competitive sites and is in a Palm River redevelopment area, so it's an ideal location for this type of development, and I'm very pleased to support the motion.
Excellent. Commissioner Murman, you recognize? Thank you. And like Commissioner Hagan has said, I feel this is such a huge win and boost for Hillsborough County. You know, it's just the jobs are being created. That's what I look at. And the fact that this is going into one of the identified nodes, like Commissioner Hagan said, in our redevelopment areas, it's close to a transportation grid. It's, you know, the ad valorem that is, the increase is like unbelievable, the difference. But I'm really happy about the jobs and all the people that live in the apartments and the surrounding areas, and now they can really have access to good-paying jobs. And I think that's what our job here is, is to make sure that our citizens have every single opportunity to really have gainful employment. But I really do want to thank the folks from Coca-Cola. They have been outstanding partners through this, very patient, and I just can't wait to see the fruits of the labor as this really progresses. So thank you all very much.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I like everything about this project. It's, I am just balking at the huge incentive from the county. It's by far the largest buy-down of mobility fees ever proposed since the program began. We haven't had anything close to a million yet, and this is 5 million, including a 15% contingency that is 630,000, which is the size of, you know, one of our, some of our larger buy-downs. I'm hoping to raise mobility fees to help pay for transportation improvements as we grow, and we may soon be asking taxpayers to reconfirm their recent vote for sales tax to pay for transportation. Giving away $5 million to a big corporation is just a bridge too far for me. I'm happy with everything else about this project, but I can't support that incentive. Sorry.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized?
Thank you. Actually, I've listened to Commissioner Smith's comments. I'm just trying to, I also think it's great. I mean, I want to see 182 new jobs. I want to see this. I felt like we were given too little information. I had asked yesterday about what the return was ad valorem, and I just heard it this morning. That information wasn't available to me yesterday afternoon. So I think it would be good for us to kind of understand and get the economics of this down in a more thorough way sometime earlier, because I did have quite a few questions that I still, as of yesterday, couldn't get answered. So I would like to understand that better. Also, and also just to generally understand what we're, I don't know, are we doing, and can anyone answer this? I'm just curious. So are we doing any ad valorem tax as far as countywide goes, credit or waiver? Is there anyone that can?
Excuse me, Cal. Can we ask Mr. Barton to come forward and elaborate, which is basically what's covered in H2B?
Good morning, commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. Specific question, no ma'am, where there are no property tax waivers or exemptions associated with this?
Thank you. Because in, I'm thinking that that might, and I also, I just worry about the, and I'm going to support this, but the, you know, what, when we do a waiver, I'm worried about waiving the, our road, our infrastructure in particular, because it is in such, I feel, such neglected and difficult place that we find ourselves in. So I'll be supporting this, but I just would like to, I'm very pleased to have this project. I think it's great work, and thank you, and I think, you know, I welcome this. I just think that we're just gonna have to keep looking at what we can do in terms of our infrastructure needs that are so significant in the future. So hopefully, we can make this up, ad valorem or otherwise, so that we can meet these needs, these critical needs that I think are so suffering.
Okay, does the applicant have any further presentation they'd like to make?
Jake Kramer, no ma'am, no more further presentation unless you have any more questions.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve of HB, H2A and H2B. Record to vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Smith, vote it now.
Thank you.
Mr. Moretta.
This brings us to staff items, K1. Mr. Adam Gorman is gonna make this presentation.
Commissioners, item K1 is in response to the board's request at the last land use meeting to have a discussion about the items that would go on the land use consent agenda. Item K1 has a brief description of the criteria that have been established, and essentially they are items that has no public hearing required, an item has consistent recommendations, whether approval or denial, and there's no oral argument filed. So the items that would go on regular would be those that don't meet those criteria, items with public hearings, items with inconsistent recommendations between Development Services, Planning Commission, and the zoning hearing master, or oral argument having been filed. So that's the criteria we have. We're open to any discussion or direction the board would like to have or give on how those items might appear on future land use agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Commissioner Oberon, you recognize?
Thank you. I was gonna bring this up in future discussion items, but it relates to this particular issue. Earlier today, we approved a mixed-use development consisting of multifamily units in addition to commercial and office uses. I like that. Because the applicant was proposing a mixed-use development, they were able to request a density bonus, which is great, and we were able to see these types of investment at every land use meeting. However, it's my understanding that only one density bonus is permissible per development, and thus developers are not able to further utilize a density bonus for a project such as affordable housing. I'm a firm believer that multi-use affordable housing are not mutually exclusive. They're actually complementary. And if you add a robust transit to the mix, you actually have a perfect recipe for success in what we've been discussing about our, not only our comprehensive plan and our community development goals. So I bring this item up as an example of how we could fully entice this and future developers to build affordable housing if we had more tools in our toolbox. And because these immediately go to consent before we ever have that discussion, I'm gonna ask staff to develop and bring back to the board for review a comprehensive affordable housing strategy as it relates to zoning and the Land Development Code to foster and incentivize affordable housing development, including but not limited to the ability to stack density bonuses, parking waivers, expedited approval, and fee waivers. Because those, all those decisions fly through consent frequently, and we miss an opportunity to negotiate an opportunity for affordable housing in some way, shape, or form with the appropriate carrots. If we've already given them all away, how do we get what we're looking for?
Is that a motion?
Yeah. Well, it was a request for staff, but I'll make it a motion.
Sir, second.
Second.
Let me ask some questions. Are you asking that those, what you just described not, well, not be on consent agenda any longer? Is that what you requested?
No, I believe it could probably go to consent, but it needs to be specifically, it has to get ahead of the process, because if it's already gone through the process and it's not considered, we don't have a policy of being able to double up on the density bonus. If it's already offered for some other reason, like we want more density there, then we don't have the ability to add additional incentives when it comes to density, given that our legislature offers that as our only tool. If we don't have the ability to double it up, I'd like to find out what we, what kind of strategy we could actually put forth.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. I would respectfully ask that the motion be augmented to include comprehensive plan language. The density bonus does include, is included in the comprehensive plan, so I think if we were to specify language in the code, we would need to have corresponding changes in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
I would like to offer that amendment to my motion, please.
Hold on, hold on. So that's an amendment that you're bringing forth? Am I correct? All right. So why don't you let someone else offer that amendment?
Okay.
Who would like to offer that? Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Kemp, offer an amendment, sir, second.
Second.
Okay. But now on the amendment, the motion, the discussion on the amendment, seeing no further discussion on the amendment, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now we're back with the main motion. Commissioner Murman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask staff, how is this gonna work? I'm kinda, I, there's too many questions around this. From your process and what you do in development services, how is this going to work?
I would understand the motion that we look at. We currently offer several incentives for affordable housing. Some of them were in the Land Development Code, some of them were in the comprehensive plan. They do include density bonuses. In the comprehensive, in the Land Development Code, there are lot-size incentives for affordable housing projects. I would understand this motion that we look at how those can be augmented to provide further incentive to affordable housing. The density bonus, and great, it starts in the comprehensive plan, provides bonuses for projects to go over the allowed density intensity in the future land use map if they do certain things, one of them being mixed-use development, the other being affordable housing. But they can't both, you cannot build two bonuses on top of each other. So take this motion to look at bringing back a proposal to allow those to be stacked on one another and take the included language is to be, I'd suggest that we would be looking at our criteria for density bonus in the Land Development Code. It is currently the traditional 80% AMI standard, and there are some things that we could look at in conjunction with affordable housing.
Ma'am, another question?
Yes.
Okay, so how's this gonna work with the applicants that are, whose items are on consent? I guess I'm just trying to understand, you're gonna go through the items, you're going to figure out if there's potential for a density bonus that can be offered for affordable housing?
And I understood this motion to be sort of distinct from what goes on the consent agenda. So I think that, I understood this, that there was an item on the consent agenda that spurred the interest in looking at these items.
So this will be separate from, is that your understanding?
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
That was my understanding, too, that this was just prompted by this discussion of the consent agenda. But apropos to this, which, again, isn't about the consent agenda, but about this, which I think is a very good proposal, because I've heard it said many times from this dais in different conditions or belief, I just would like to draw people's attention, the commissioner's attention, to the 2019 Florida statutes, again, on the impact fees. So just to be clear here, a county, municipality, or special district may provide an exception or waiver for an impact fee for the development or construction of housing that is affordable, as defined in 420. If a county, municipality, or special district provides such an exception or waiver, it is not required to use any revenues to offset the impact. So I just want to be clear with regards to that, so there's clarity about that. This section does not apply to water and sewer connection fees. So I have heard, I believe, heard that misstated or misunderstood, so I really wanted to, Florida statutes, I'm reading from 2019, I just want to make sure that there's clarity about that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta, can you say anything further? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you.
Thank you. Back on the consent agenda criteria that staff was talking about, I would like to make some suggestions about that. One, that we do not have on consent, any increase in density outside the urban service area. We've run into trouble with that a time or two since I've been here, and I think it'd just be easier if we could evaluate those things not on consent. Increases in density outside the urban service area, increases in density on failed roads, or proposals that will push.
or proposals that will push roads to level of service F, or with obvious negative downstream effects. In fact, that's part of the Development Services twelve-month land use work plan that we've just had brought forth to look at those downstream effects. So, if those, anything with design exceptions required, I think bears us, a discussion at the board level, or where the schools are over capacity, would be another, another possibility of removing those things from consent to have board discussion. So, those would be my suggestions.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I'd also, I don't think it would impact consent that much, but I've seen times when it would, or, or removing one item maybe, or two, but I'm wondering about a limit under ten acres. It looks like today, it would only, on the consent agenda, have affected a few items, actually. It looks like two today, and, but in the past, I've seen some pretty dramatic items on consent. We seem to have moved a little bit away from that, but I'm thinking about something like anything over ten acres.
Okay. Anything else to come before today?
Yes.
There's two more people on the.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Well, okay. I'm trying to understand, if we pull everything off consent that would lead to a failed road, we're not even giving the applicant the opportunity to, um, offer to fix the failed road, or use the mobility fees that we're gonna be increasing to do that? So, why would we want, it sounds like we don't want anything on consent anymore. I mean, personally, I think we're kinda micromanaging staff in some ways. I, I understand the one about outside the urban service area, 'cause I think that's, but the failed road and the potential for a failed road, I think is just going a little too far. I, I, I think there needs to be a strong message, and if we use the checklist that we developed on every project that comes in, we'll, you know, the developer and all, the applicant will see, you know, your, your project is not gonna go very far, 'cause you've got, you know, you've gotta make improvements on the roads here. So, but, but if they make the improvements for the road, and as part of their application, you're saying you still want it pulled because it's on the failed road, yet they're offering to fix the road. So, I guess, I, I think there is just.
Well, this is, this is what we're gonna do, okay? Mr. Gorman told me that staff needs some direction. They had some suggestions, but no direction, which means we need to put some of these in the form of a motion, okay? So, I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Smith, since she was, she brought up her suggestions first, and so Commissioner Smith, you need to put yours in the form of a motion, and this board will decide if we wanna agree with you or not agree with you.
Okay. And, and I hear you, Commissioner Merman, that if, if the end result, the roads no longer failed anymore, that would, that would be fine. So, let me, let me put it this way to, to get started with. To not put on consent any increase in density outside the urban service area, or any proposals that will result, that will leave the roads in, uh, a level of service F, that, you know, at the end of their, the result of their project will be, there will, there will be no level of service F roads. And I'll leave it there, and see if we can get this much passed, and then see if we wanna add anything else.
There's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Yeah, I wanna say I completely agree with Commissioner Merman's comments, and I guess the question I've got for, I guess, I don't know if this is Adam or Joe, the motion's on the floor, do you feel that that's going to dramatically increase our regular agenda?
Commissioners, I, I believe that those increases in density outside the urban service area will not amount to a large number of, of items. The, the issue of failed roadways is, or, has moved from concurrency to mobility fees. We have a different mechanism for, for addressing roadway capacity deficiencies that may, there may be more items that are, that are caught in that, that, that direction may implicate more items than increases in density outside the urban service area, simply because it's a different nature of how we're dealing with, with failed roads going from concurrency to a mobility fee. So, I'd say of those two, the, the roadway item would, would likely result in more items on regular than the density in the urban service area.
Okay. I may be the only one up here, but I am not interested in dramatically increasing our regular agenda. Our meetings drag on way too long as it is, and I'm gonna be very honest, if we're gonna go in that direction, then I think we should go back to having two land use meetings a month, like we used to when I first got on this board.
Okay. Mr. White, to the motion.
So, for level of service of roads, it, it's, it, the starting point is the board's adopted level of service of that road, correct?
That's correct.
We, we don't have any roads that have an adopted level of service of F, do we?
No, sir, D or C are the adopted level of service.
D or C would be the adopted, okay.
Commissioner Kemp, to the motion.
Thank you. I just think if, if this, if something like this would dramatically increase our agenda, then we have a problem. So, I think it's a really good level of oversight and knowledge for this board to have, and I would hope that the kinds of things that would come to our attention would be resolvable in not, you know, hour-long back and forth, but I think it's a, it's a good kinda oversight check, and I would hope, I, I would say if we dramatically increased the size of our agenda, then we have a real problem with what we're doing if, if that blows our agenda out.
Commissioner Smith, to your motion.
Yes, one quick comment, just to, to point out, we do not do the applicants any favors by putting things on consent that we are all starting to pull off, so they, they come not expecting, not prepared. I think it's better if we have some overarching board direction that, that guides staff in what they put on consent, so that the applicant comes prepared to discuss those two things.
Commissioner Merman, to the motion.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, based on Commissioner White's question to you about the failed roads, what does that mean in regards to her motion?
I, I believe it would mean, the implication being that roadways that would be on or would cause a roadway to go to level of service F, or a level of service D in some circumstances, based on the motion, would be not on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, it could be a level of service road now of C or D.
Yes.
But not currently failed.
A roadway, yes, it could be a level of service C or D, and with development trips, it would bring it to a, to a failed or a D status, depending on where it is.
Okay, I'm gonna offer an amendment to the motion, that the only way to pull it off consent would be if it's on a failed road.
Seven amendment by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Hagan. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the motion? Any discussion on amendments to the motion? Seeing no discussion amendments, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Sorry, but, so, so, I was, I was trying to get to where I thought you wanted to be, which is where if the development was going to leave it failed, we would pull it off consent, but, um, 'cause I had originally said if it's on a failed road, it would be off, off of consent, and, and that's where you're back to now?
Can I answer her question? Based on what Commissioner White asks of staff, it is, if, if there is something on consent where there is, the level of service is like a, well, be, not an F, but it would be an F, if the development proceeded, it would be off consent.
Okay, then we're, that's what my original motion was, trying to get to what you wanted.
I think it's too many items when you, based on what Commissioner White said, and my understanding of your motion, is that any item that would lead to an F road, but I want the item to be, if it's not going to happen, but if it is on a failed road, it would be taken off consent. And I'm thinking, from what I'm hearing, is that you don't, you want it the, you want it the way I don't want it.
Okay. We have an amendment by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Hagan. We're voting on the amendment. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three, Commissioners.
Motion carried, four to three, Commissioners Kemp, Oberman, and Smith voted no.
Now, back on the main motion, is there any discussion on the main motion? Any discussion on the main motion? Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Right, and so while we're talking about land development code, this is one simple land development code item that I've been working with staff on for a very, very long time, to try to simplify and streamline the, the way in which citizens participate in our zoning hearing, and we have finally come to one small, but important step that I, they've told me I need board direction to ask them to draft a land development code amendment that would, they would bring back to us in the next cycle. So, I'm just asking for board direction to let them draft an amendment to bring back, and what this addresses is an issue that we've bumped into several times at the, these zoning hearings, where we have people, sometimes very, uh, very involved community leaders who have gotten here expecting to be able to speak to their elected representatives, and, and been tripped up by this one piece of red tape that is our request for oral argument form, and that's the last two pages of this document that I sent out, that I handed out to you. So, what happens, and I don't know if you all understand this, I've been through this many times as a, as a citizen, what happens is you go to the zoning hearing, and, and then you have to wait, you can't just file this form that you find there. You have to wait fifteen business days for the zoning hearing master to file his recommendations, and then you have a window of ten calendar days where you fill out this two-page report, it's the last two, or form, it's the last two pages of this stuff you get at the zoning hearing. You've got this ten calendar day window, and then there's about eighteen more days till the county commission hearing, where you can't file it then, you can't file it the week before the county commission. You have to fill out these two pages, the last two pages of this thing, fifteen business days after the zoning hearing, master hearing, within ten calendar days, which ends up being eighteen, right, it's a, it's a, it's a very, uh.
We haven't had a chance to read this.
I know. I'm not asking you to read it. It is, it is cumbersome to read, and it turns out that you don't have to, it doesn't matter what you put on this. In fact, the applicant's side and the citizen's side, I've done this many times, fills out half a dozen of them for half a dozen people. You don't have to fill it out yourself, you don't have to sign it, you don't have to fill this form out if somebody else fills it out for you. But if you try to fill it out yourself, that last page really throws you, it looks really intimidating. What you wanna do, you have to check one of these things, you have to fill in some stuff in the lines below, if you, but the truth of the matter is, if you check anything except for number two about the evidence, and you say anything you want on the lines, you can say the same thing everybody else is saying. You get to speak at the board of county commission hearing if you filled it in. The point is that this is a, mainly a piece of red tape that gets in the way, and let me tell you this, nobody else does this. We've looked at like ten counties and cities around here, nobody is doing this, um, batch of, of red tape, not, not, Miami-Dade, Orange, Pasco, Pinellas, Pope, Manatee, or the city of Tampa, nobody requires you to fill out this form before you can come speak to your elected representatives about a zoning hearing. So, all I'm asking is board direction to allow staff to draft a land development code amendment that would just eliminate this one little piece of red tape and bring that back, and then we can decide, and y'all can read it, and you can decide if you still want them to have this or not, but just, let's bring back a draft for the consideration of the board. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. I'm gonna tell you now, I'm not gonna vote for this, because I haven't had a chance to read this. We're making a drastic change to what's going on in this county, and I'm not comfortable sitting here voting for this and having that chance to review it at all. So, I, that's a concern I have. So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support the motion until, uh, may, maybe you wanna have us look at this and bring it back in another meeting, but to vote on this today, I mean, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for saying that, because I was going to recommend to make a substitute motion to defer this to a later meeting that, where we can actually workshop the item and discuss it amongst each other, and have time to review this, and what other counties do. I mean, if we're gonna change our process, we need time to really look at what other people are doing and, and put the right information. So, that's my, I'm making a substitute motion to defer this to a later meeting where staff can make a more thorough presentation on the item.
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Merman, is there a second? I'll second it.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith, as I understand, this is our code as we have it now. This isn't a suggestion for a new code. You're asking our staff to look at what other counties are doing. I've known for many years, though not as involved or knowledgeable as you are, that it has been a huge barrier, and, and we are an outlier, a huge outlier, in how we discourage and convolute citizen abilities to speak to us by having this crazy, cumbersome process that no one else has. I had looked into this originally because I'd heard so many complaints about it, and I looked at what some other counties were doing myself, and no one had where you have to, if you speak at the zoning hearing master, and just so the board understands this a little bit, as it now stands, you can speak to the zoning hearing master, but then you have to wait till the zoning hearing master issues a decision, and then you have to re-sign up to speak at the board. That is utterly nowhere else, and then it's a window of, what did you say, ten days or something like that, after the zoning hearing master? So, you have to wait, as a citizen, to wait for the zoning hearing master decision. Then you have to sign up in the ten days following that, then you can't sign up for the eighteen days after that, or however it goes. It is a huge barrier. If we did this for voting, no one would ever be voting. And I really think that our citizens deserve a streamlining. This isn't saying what that streamlining should be. This isn't saying what that streamlining should be. This isn't saying anything about, this is simply letting us look at as it now stands. And I know, I understand what you're saying is, I'd like to look at what some other counties are doing, and could staff please look at that and come back with some suggestions? And we could have a discussion about it at that time, which I think is really where we need to start being. So it just, you know, it's, I, you, I understand you're trying to educate us about what it, how it is now. And I'd like the opportunity to really review this. And I'm just saying, for the staff to look at alternatives to the cumbersome and difficult process that we now have in place. And I appreciate the fact that you've worked on this and thought about it a lot and brought this forward.
Ms. Kemp.
I was, was in the queue, but I, and really what I was just gonna say is, this is what we give citizens to understand our process. And, and early on, I had always said, you know, our job is to deliver well-rounded, efficient services to our citizen as best we can. This is not customer-friendly, and I think is to Commissioner Smith's point. So taking the opportunity to take a look at it and find out if there's a better way to allow citizens and investors and property owners to effectively get where they want to go is, is worthy effort. If we can simplify it or streamline it in such a way, which I think that's what your, what your motion is, is to do that. This is, our review of this document is what we give citizens every day when they're in a party of record in any case that comes before this board. So while I may not have read it recently, it's a standard document. It's not a proposal that you're making. So I just want to clarify that. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Right, so I had been working with staff on this, and this is, the, my motion was to have staff bring us a draft land development code amendment that would simply eliminate the form part from the process. It's not a major change. I do think we need to look at the whole process and compare it with other counties because, man, it is a Byzantine maze of red tape compared to what other counties do. And it all needs a look. But this proposal is a very simple request to have staff draft something that would bring back. We could all have a chance to read it on the next land development code meeting where we're looking at that, to just see if we can eliminate this one form that nobody else requires that is such a cumbersome hurdle for citizens between the zoning hearing and us. We've run into this with the, the, the chair of the BLM Civic Association, with a community activist who's been involved in the Wyomama Community Plan coming here and finding themselves tripping up because they hadn't filled out this form within that window. And it's, it's really, and as I say, the, it doesn't matter how you fill it out. It doesn't, you don't have to sign it. Anybody can fill it out for you. It doesn't matter what you check or what you write on here. It's nothing but a piece of red tape. And so I was hoping we could just have that come here as a draft, and that would give everybody a chance to think about it and look into that one small tweak to our, to our processes. You know, if, so I'm gonna stick with that. But if, if we end up, you know, coming back for a, some other kind of, like a workshop, when would that be? I mean, what, can you tell me the difference?
Mr. Gormly would like to actually assist us in this process.
Can you tell me the difference between these two?
Thank you, Commissioner. So our land development code amendment for round one is already underway. If the board were to direct us to draft this amendment and for, for consideration and discussion at the April 7th land use meeting, it would not be able to fit into this current round of amendments. We will have a workshop at that date on round, on amendments that are in that round. Depending on the board's preference and direction, it could become its own round and lag a little bit behind the rest of the schedule or go to round two. So depend, as I understand the direction, it's to draft something for the board to consider as opposed to drafting something and including it in the round of amendments that will go forward. If that's, if that's the board's direction, we understand what, what it is. It's taking the oral argument out of the process. The other item that, that will implicate and for, would need some additional direction is then what is the criteria of what goes on the consent agenda? Because without oral argument, the current criteria don't, they would not fit that, that new scenario. So that is something else that could be part of the board's discussion if you so choose.
Okay, great. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioner Merman, I can understand the spirit of your substitute motion. Commissioner Smith, this probably should have come on the agenda as a commissioner item, on the commissioner section of the agenda. I know I would have liked to have seen it that way. However, I'm not going to be able to support the substitute motion. I will be supporting your original motion. Probably no surprise that the District Four Commissioner, you know, really feels the, the heat and the brunt of these issues literally on a daily basis because most of the intensive growth is, is going on in my district. So I, I, this is something frankly that I've been looking at myself. I'm, but I'm fine that you beat me to the punch on it here because it's important. There is some red tape there. There are some barriers to entry. And frankly, I think we probably have more work to do in the land development code because I feel that we have several provisions that benefit those that are able to, to bring sophisticated legal teams to the table and things like that. I actually got to know the BLM Civic Association folks really well because they showed up at a BOCC meeting not only because of this, this request for oral argument provision, but their item had actually ended up on the consent agenda. They were, they were lost just with the complete ZHM process from start to finish. And my staff and I were able to, you know, help bring them up to speed on some of these provisions and get them plugged in and active. So, so I'm feeling your, your pain here, which is why I want to support it and get it moving sooner than later. Madam Chair, if, or Vice Chair, serving as Chair this very moment, if, if the substitute motion fails and we get back to the main motion, I'd like to be recognized for an amendment.
Excellent, thank you. So we have a substitute motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
I'm gonna, I'm counting votes here, so I'm gonna withdraw the substitute.
Okay, so the substitute amendment has been withdrawn. Commissioner White.
Thank you. I, I'd like to offer an amendment that, that this be, that it's, that it become its own round, that it be inserted in its own round.
Yeah, I have a motion by Commissioner, a substitute amendment by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Could you explain what you mean by own round?
Mr. Gormly was explaining how it's too late to, to have this plugged in or inserted into round one. So our options would be to wait for round two, which would take some time. Or it could just become its own round and travel on its own just slightly behind what's, what's currently in, in round one.
Yes, sir, if, if there was desire to have more discussion, it, it wouldn't fit into the round. If the direction was today to go with it, then we could fit it into the round. But to your point, it will, it will accommodate a, a different schedule to allow discussion to occur next month.
Oh, you can, you can get it into round one?
If we, if you gave direction today to go with it as opposed to having a board discussion on it.
I'm gonna withdraw that motion then, okay.
But just, I'm sorry, if I'm unclear, the, the direction, I understand here, is to bring it back for discussion at the next land use meeting. And if we do that, it will not be able to fit into the round. If the board were to, to say, go forward with the amendment and start it today, that, that process would start, and notices would go out before the board would get a chance to discuss it again. So if...
So, if we, if we want...
Just repeat your motion.
Yeah, the motion is, was to have staff draft a land development code amendment that would do this and, and put it into this cycle that's coming forward. I'm not opposed to having more board discussion if, if that's what needs to happen in order for everybody to feel more comfortable about this and understand the ramifications. But I, I just thought it was simple enough to, and, and that's the, that's the advice I had gotten from staff over several months was to bring this, this way.
To clarify, I understood the motion that I heard today was to bring it back for the board to, to discuss and consider it. If that's the desire, it will not fit in round one. If the motion today is go forward, draft it, and file it as an amendment because you understand what, what the direction is, is to remove oral argument, then it can fit in round one. It'll be a workshop at your next land use meeting, and it will, it will get distributed with our other land development code amendments that will be in this round. So that's, that's the distinction.
It's what the maker of the motion wants. Mr., Madam Chair, do I, okay.
I'm Chair.
Okay, you're back as Chair, Mr. Chairman. So Commissioner Smith, just so that I understand the main motion then, are, are you asking for it to be inserted in round one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
It'll, it'll come drafted, part of round one. The board can certainly have discussion and vote it up or down then at that time, right? So, all right, so there's no need for a, for a, for an amendment then.
Okay. Concerning this whole idea, I'm gonna vote for it now because Commissioner White clarified everything on this, okay? However, I would request that you don't bring these kind of things into the board meeting that's clearly throwing on us. I would advise, in some way, somehow, this probably needs to be on the agenda so we can get it in advance, so we can review it, and then have a discussion on it just to spring it on us at this meeting regardless of what's in here. If it's, if it's something presently on it, but you want to change, I would suggest that you put it on, on the agenda as a members' issue. And then we have an opportunity to review it, and then come in here and discuss it. But just to spring it on us, I don't feel, didn't feel comfortable doing that. But I want to vote for it this time in collegiality. I want to vote for it, and we bring it back and, and see what happens from there. But just, please, let's, let's not do that. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried. Six to zero.
Is there any other business coming forth? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have another item I'd like to raise as to consent, which I had said before. But since we were looking at motions, I wanted to make a motion to, to not move forward on consent items over 10 acres.
That's a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Is there a second? Is there a second? It dies for lack of a second. Any other business coming forth? Seeing none, we adjourn, and now we move into the workshop on plan amendments. Mr. Garcia, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission Staff. We have six items to present to you this morning, briefings that will be heard for adoption consideration on April 16th by this body. Without any further ado, we'll get into the presentations. The first three amendments will be presented by Ms. Krista Kelly.
Good morning, Ms. Kelly, welcome.
Good morning, thank you.
And whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and begin with the first item.
Thank you, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. I'm presenting comprehensive plan amendment 20-01. This site is located on the, south of Knights Griffin Road and Stacy Road. It's located in the rural service area and within the boundary of the Thonat Tassasa Community Plan Boundary. The major roadways that support this site are US Highway 301 to the north, I-4 to the south, and I-75 to the west. The arrow shows a site outlined in pink. It is a seven-acre parcel within a larger 35-acre tract. Currently, it's used for agricultural purposes, as are the surrounding areas. There are scattered home sites, rural home sites on larger tracts. And this is a rural subdivision on half-acre tracts or lots. There are natural resources in the area that are fairly significant to the north. There's Hillsborough River State Park. And to the south is the Thonat Tassasa, Lake Thonat Tassasa. This is the adopted future land use map showing this site currently designated residential one, as is all the properties surrounding this site on the south side of 301. The applicant's requesting a change on this seven-acre parcel to light industrial. The impact of this change currently, up to seven dwelling units could possibly be developed on site for non-residential uses up to 110,000 square feet or a .25 FAR. Whichever is less would be permitted if locational criteria was met. The proposed change to light industrial would eliminate the residential use of the property, and it would increase the FAR to .75, which would essentially translate to 228 square feet approximately of non-residential uses. That concludes my briefing on this topic, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Is there a rezoning application traveling with this one?
Yes, there is.
Okay, good. I was just about to say, this would be a good candidate for that, given the...
That's a nice segue, Commissioner, because what I really wanted to inform this body of this morning is that 2001 and 2002 do have companion rezonings that staff is very comfortable with moving forward. Mr. Gormly and myself have discussed this. These will be scheduled out to a later point in time. It will not necessarily be heard at your April 16th date. So 2001 and 2002 will be heard by the Planning Commission on April 13th. However, they will be heard at a later time to coordinate with the companion rezonings for those two cases. So God, I would mention that to you all.
Thank you. Well, as, as the commissioner that championed that concept, I am so glad to see that this one has a companion rezoning traveling with it because it can certainly put, potentially put some concerns that I may have at, at ease. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I don't hear any other questions, so go right ahead.
Okay, I'll continue next with comprehensive plan amendment 20-02. This site is located on the north side of Swindell Road, just west of County Line Road. This area right here is Plant City. The site is in the rural service area of the county. It is within the Plant City northeast master plan area, which is outside of their city limits. However, it is an overlay of what they project in the future. The site served by two major roadways, I-4 to the south and County Line Road to the east. This aerial shows a site just north of I-4. It's seven acres in size. It consists of two parcels. It's developed with one single-family home. The remaining property is undeveloped. The surrounding area, as you can see, is still rural in character consisting of large tracts and rural home sites. The adopted future land use map shows a site currently designated residential one, as is... as is the surrounding area. This is agricultural rural, one to five, and to the south of the site, there are two parcels designated light industrial. One is owned by FDOT and it's for storm water management. The other is a private site that is currently undeveloped. Plant City is adjacent to I-4 to the south. If you can see the dotted blue line, that is the Plant City boundary. This parcel is designated commercial and that in Plant City, there are light industrial tracts. The applicant's requesting light industrial, as you can see, outlined here. The impact of this change on the seven acre project area, it would allow currently up to seven dwelling units for non-residential uses, 110,000 square feet or a .25 FAR, whichever is less. If the amendment were approved, residential uses would not be permitted and the FAR would increase to, from .25 to .75. And again, that concludes my presentation and any questions are welcome.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Oh, I'm still in the queue for this.
Okay. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
So, so what we're basically doing is we're taking a corner lot right off of an interstate. Is there a, I can't tell from my backup materials whether or not there's, you know, the highway, it's a highway exit or a highway on-ramp. It appears as though it is, is that true?
It is an interchange, however, it's, the way that it's designed, it's fairly awkward. In order to go westbound on I-4, you would have to go west, come off of the Swindell Road, hit a frontage road along I-4 to Park Road to get back onto the interstate to go west. To go east on I-4 from this site, you would hit County Line Road and there's a cloverleaf that leads you back onto I-4 to go east.
Okay, and it's, there's residential properties all on the east side of this particular?
Yeah, let me get back to the aerial. It might help. If I can get there. There. Yeah, as you can see, it's scattered home sites along Swindell Road. It's a very narrow rural road. This is that extension to the frontage road that I was talking about. Along this area, there's, I believe, two churches, one retail business and a cemetery, and then some scattered homes in the back.
And then similarly to the previous issue regarding the zoning issue, what are we planning here? Because there's a broad list of items on the, on the zoning change, I mean, on the use change, it's pretty broad. If I were a single-family homeowner there, I'd kind of like to know, what are we talking about here?
Absolutely. In the application, now, they are not held to this justification or what they're indicating, but what we were told at the pre-application meeting is a truck stop type of arrangement, you know, with a convenience store and pumps, gas pumps.
Sure, okay, all right.
That's what they envisioned for it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We get to the last one of mine anyways.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, sorry. It's outside the urban service area, so they would be on well and septic?
In this case, water and sewer is not available in the area. It is on the south side of I-4 in Plant City. I discussed this informally with our liaison with Plant City. It'd be very expensive to extend it, but that is really up to the applicant. At this time, there is not infrastructure there.
Okay, number three.
All right, thank you. The next plan amendment is CPA 2003. This site's located west of Tampa, it's north of Lowell Road and south of Bradford Lane. It's in the urban service area. It's also within the boundary of the Carrollwood, the Greater Carrollwood North Dale Communities Plan. This area, the major roadways in this area include Gunn Highway to the south and Dale Mayberry to the east. This is the aerial of the site. It consists of six parcels totaling five acres. You can see the surrounding area, it's suburban in character, the lots are predominantly quarter acre lots and some smaller lots. The adopted future land use map shows the site currently designated residential four, as is the surrounding area adjacent to the site. There is residential nine to the southwest on the south side of Lowell and residential 12 to the west and residential six also further to the west. The applicant's requesting residential nine for the project area, and again, it's similar to the residential nine on the south side of Lowell Road. The impact of the change on this five acre project area, currently 21 dwelling units would be allowable. It would, for non-residential uses, meeting locational criteria, up to 175,000, thousand square feet or .25 FAR would be permitted, whichever is less. The proposed change to residential nine would essentially double that number to 48 dwelling units. It would remain capped at 175,000 square feet. However, the FAR would increase to .50 FAR, again, whichever is less. And again, that concludes this presentation and any questions?
Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. There's, there's still, believe it or not, in Carrollwood, quite a bit of septic service. Is this level of density require connecting to services? Storm waters, wastewater, any of the other?
Yeah, anything under, under half an acre would require.
Okay, so this will require connection to services?
Yes.
Okay, great. That was the only question I really had.
Okay, number four.
Okay.
Commissioners, good morning. Will Augustine, Planning Commission Staff. The next item before you is plan amendment briefing for comprehensive plan amendment 20-04. Thank you. Okay. Comprehensive plan amendment 20-04 is located in North Wells Hillsborough County, just north of Limeball Avenue and south of Gunn Highway. Subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in northwest Hillsborough County and is approximately 3.42 acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding area is predominantly single-family homes. The land use of residential four and residential six predominate the area. The subject property is north of Nixon Road, West Limeball Avenue intersection. Anderson Road is to the west and Gunn Highway in the Limeball Avenue intersection is to the east. The subject site is in the urban service area. The subject site has adopted residential four land use classification. The large public, quasi-public parcel immediately to the east is the Xavier Canela Elementary School. To the west along Lynn Road is the Indian Cultural Center and the Hindu Temple of Florida. The area to the south of Limeball Avenue is a mixture of office, commercial, manufacturing, and light industrial uses. Residential four and residential six are the predominant land uses of the surrounding properties. The applicant is requesting a residential 12 land use change. The currently adopted land use classification of residential four allows a maximum of 13 dwelling units on the 3.42 acre site. Suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to 175,000 square feet or a floor area ratio of .25. With a land use change to residential 12, the subject site would have a potential build-out of up to 41 dwelling units. Suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to 175,000 square feet or floor area ratio of .5. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Um, just a quick question. Given the, the increased number of units, whether it be multifamily townhomes or whatever they're gonna do there, the road structure that's in that area, is it currently, if we had that many more elements or dwellings added to it, is the road of, be able to take on that kind of capacity at this point?
Commissioner, I'm not sure I know exactly what the level of service currently is for, for Lynn or Nixon Road yet.
You do, you do or do not?
I do not, no ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner Oberman, if I may interject very quickly. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission Staff. Part of our review process, this is a briefing, part of our review process is we send this out to, of course, the external departments in development services and coordinating with, with their various departments in the county to get information back from them, including transportation information. So this is a very preliminary information that we're providing you as an oversight. As we get more information from those departments in the county, we'll be able to provide that information closer to the hearing date.
Okay. Now, the reason I ask is in looking at one of the illustrations, there does appear to be, you know, increasing densities in the area that, without necessarily what looks like any significant changes in the road structure. That may be appropriate, but it's kind of hard to tell at this point, that's why I asked. So thank you.
Okay, number five.
The next item before you is plan amendment briefing for comprehensive plan amendment 20-05. Plan amendment 20-05 is located in South Hillsborough County along Highway 41, just south of Cracker Avenue and north of Big Ben Road. The subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in South Hillsborough County, which is approximately 18.65 acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding aerial is predominantly commercial and manufacturing businesses. The land use of heavy industrial and light industrial predominate the area. The subject property is south of Cracker Avenue in the, in Highway 41 intersection. The Tampa Port Authority's Port Red Wing and the Tico Big Ben Station is to the west and the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve is to the east. The subject site is, is in the urban service area. Site has an adopted suburban mixed-use land use classification. The area south of the subject site is heavy industrial, light industrial, and community mixed-use 12. North of the subject site is mostly residential four, suburban mixed-use six, and heavy industrial. Heavy industrial, light industrial, suburban mixed-use six are the predominant land uses for the surrounding properties. The applicant is requesting a heavy industrial land use classification change. The currently adopted land use classification of suburban mixed-use six allows a maximum of 111 dwelling units on the 18.65 acre site. Suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office, or multipurpose projects are limited to 175,000 square feet or a floor area ratio of .25. With a land use change to heavy industrial, the subject site would have a potential build-out of up to over 609,000 square feet or a floor area ratio of .75. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I know in this area of Gibsonton, there are still some areas that do not have urban services, well, that, that don't, that are on septic, that don't have sewer. Is this one?
Currently, this site is undeveloped.
So is there sewer in the area that they could tie into or, or not? Do we know? There is, okay. Commissioner Murman is saying there is, and that's something I'd be looking at when this comes back. Do, I didn't see you put up the existing land use map. You put up the adopted. Do you have that one? The existing land use, it's in our backup?
I don't, I don't have it as a slide, I'm sorry.
Well, all right. Let me just ask you this. So it's in the coastal high hazard area, it's in a flood plain, and it's between, you can see Golden Aster Scrub over there is the light green. This area that is heavy industrial, you can tell it has a lot of wetlands, and the back half of this site is, is wetlands as well. And then across the street is the Fred and Ida Scrub Schultz Preserve. All of this is an area full of significant wildlife habitat, including the endangered, endemic Florida Golden Aster. So I would, I would like to ask if it's possible when, in between now and when we hear this again, for Forest Riverville of the Conservation Lands Departments to provide comment or review? Is that possible on comprehensive plan amendments the way it is on zonings?
Absolutely, Commissioner. We'll, if there's a specific request that you have regarding a certain function in the surrounding area or certain existing conditions in the area, we'll be more than happy to, to do that and extend that to the appropriate agencies for review and response.
Great. And even though, you know, this shows up as heavy industrial around it, the, the area between this and Golden Aster Scrub, on the existing land use, it shows up as blue public, the same, same comp plan designation or the same existing land use as the Golden Aster Scrub, so...
That's not exactly a future land use category. For the purpose, the existing land use categories are used to try and reflect the existing conditions of the surrounding built environment. However, we do not use the existing land use on a regular basis as those layers that we get that information from, from the property appraiser tend to differ slightly from what the future land use categories are and how we would classify properties. So we, that's why we don't really use that as a point of reference for you.
Mm-hmm, okay. Just, just so long as we get conservation comment on here to, to talk about what the ramifications might be for the wetlands, for the significant wildlife habitat of heavy industrial uses that, that are possible in this area. that are possible in this area.
Do we know that? Thank you.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, I think we'll just have to wait and see what's being proposed there. I'm, I don't know. I haven't heard anything. Other than the fact, I will tell you, we need places that have jobs.
I agree.
And so, I think, you know, once we get all the information, we'll be able to see how we can move forward in a good way. There is sewer in the area, not as much as I'd like, and this is like Big Ben right now. Now that I got that done, and John, poor John Lyons, if I mention it to him every day, it's every other, you know, how can we get sewer in the area? So, I know, and George Cassidy, they're working on it, and it's just very, very, very expensive, as you all know. But they're working on it, and I know there are plans. And I didn't know if y'all realize this, but when you convert septic to sewer, it takes like seven to nine years. It's a crazy amount of time that takes. So, these are things we really need to work on. When we see it, we got to get on it quick, because it just takes so much time. But I'll look forward to hearing the comments that come back from the different agencies that would be involved with this project.
Thank you, Ms. Yeh. Yes, all of the reports we get from reviewing agencies, of course, are contained in the report that we present to you for your adoption hearing. And of course, we should have them, I anticipate, of course, we will have them prior to the hearing when we normally brief you all, in case you might bring up those specific questions again. Thank you.
Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
I too am looking at the environmental area, looking at the illustrations, looking at what appears to be half of the property is wetlands. There's a great deal of what appears to be a creek or a river that runs through that and through all that area down into, ultimately, into Apollo Beach. So, the categories, what we're moving from to what we're moving to, would appear to be something that would possibly offer a very hazardous situation to the wildlife in the area, again, the wetlands in the area. So I'm a little concerned about taking that level of heavy industrial from what it was previously. I have some concerns about the move here without having a full understanding of the environmental impact for the entire region, because it really does run right alongside that piece of property. It's not obvious from the aerial, but it is obvious from one of the other illustrations that shows, you know, the tributaries that run along through there and are driven by that particular area. And while, yes, I want jobs, if it causes what appears to be a lot of wetland absorbable area in that area, environmental hazard to the, to that community, especially that which is on well and septic still possibly, I'm going to look at this very closely before I would agree to take this move.
A-6.
My name is Jawan Haley, Planning Commission staff. I will be presenting to you the briefing for the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Amendment, I'm sorry, 20-06. This is a privately initiated amendment. The request is to change the land use category for the subject property. The subject property is 5508 Orient Road from Commercial Mixed Use 12 to Office Commercial 20. So, the subject site, it is located in East Hillsborough County. It is within the urban service area. So it is located on 1.46 acres. It is located here in the, I can get the mouse here, the northwestern quadrant of the Orient Road and Hillsborough, East Hillsborough Avenue intersection. Again, it is within the urban service area. The existing land use is a mobile home park. It is within the limits of the East Lake Orient Community Plan. So, Orient Road, immediately to the east of the subject property, it is a two-lane collector. East Hillsborough Avenue to the south, it is a four-lane arterial. To provide you with a bit of context for the surrounding area, across Orient Road to the east, this is a residential area. Immediately to the north, across Emes Road of the subject property, there is some residential development to the north here. The majority of the development, however, to the west, abutting the parcel to the west, is light industrial, commercial, non-residential development. The Hard Rock Casino and Hotel are across Hillsborough Avenue to the southeast. Along here, there are additional non-residential development. Further south, there is some residential development going further back across East Hillsborough Avenue. So this is just a layout of the land use map here. This is the commercial mixed-use category. Again, this is the subject parcel that is the current adopted land use category. Here, as I stated earlier, the non-residential development is mostly Office Commercial 20 here. Going north, there is Research Corporate Park, further north, Light Industrial Land Use category. All back here is Community Mixed Use 12, including the Hard Rock Casino Hotel. There's OC 20 along East Hillsborough, and Residential Six going further south.
Some type of office.
So the, so here, this is just showing the, the category change, the proposed future land use map. So, it would extend OC 20 further to Orient Road. So the impacts, currently, the CMU 12 that is currently adopted allows a density of up to 12 dwelling units per acre. The maximum density is 12 dwelling units. The current floor area ratio is 0.50. That this allows for a maximum intensity of 31,798 square feet. The proposed change would allow the density to go up to 20 dwelling units per acre for OC 20. The maximum density would be 29 dwelling units. This change would increase the floor area ratio, the floor area ratio to 0.75. The maximum intensity would be 47,698 square feet. I just want to point out that both of the categories, they are not subject to commercial locational criteria. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no questions. Anything else, Ms. Garcia?
No, sir. That concludes our briefing this morning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.